I'd like to call this November 27th meeting of the Rockham County School Board to order. The first item on our agenda is to approve the agenda members. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Now, please, if you're able, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Now, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now move into our public comments. We have two public commenters for tonight. Please remember, and Nancy, you know you're the first one, so you start making your way to the podium. And please remember that we, to follow the, what are they called? The pillars, the pillars of character. I'm still sleepy from Thanksgiving. I apologize. Address the board as a whole, and please be respectful. Oh, you have three minutes. That was the other thing. You have three minutes, and the alarm will sound at 30 seconds to go. Okay, thanks. I know, it never does. Thank you.
I'm Nancy Bassett, President of the Rockham County Education Association. Appreciate everything that you guys have done to help us educators, and I will truly miss working with all of you. And I wish you well in all of your new endeavors. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bassett. The next speaker is Krista Showalter East.
That's a nice tone to follow. I like that. My name's Krista. Thank you all for receiving my comments on the redistricting proposal that you're voting on tonight, and I regret not being able to comment at the two earlier meetings. I appreciate the work that has gone into this proposal, as well as the challenges you all face as you navigate growing schools, uneven distribution of resources, and the cost of new buildings. I also realize this isn't a decision you can make on the basis of emotions, even as I trust you realize the implications that a proposal like this has for eight-year-olds, like our own daughter, who will have to leave a school community where she is currently happy and thriving. If necessary, we'll do our part to benefit the larger school system, but I do question how this process has unfolded and whether all the proposed changes are the wisest in terms of timing and execution. At the October 23rd board meeting, I heard the presentation from the Strategic Services Group you may be working with on strategic planning. I appreciated his emphasis on listening and dialogue within that process, and I noted how absent that felt from this redistricting proposal. I will admit I haven't been the most informed or aware parent when it comes to school board matters, and I hope that that will change, but it didn't feel great that our family wasn't aware of this proposal until October, a month and a half before the final vote. I learned later there was a presentation back in May, and I wonder why letters weren't sent to families most impacted by this decision at that point to ensure that they were at the table and part of the dialogue. Aside from these opportunities for public comment, where I'll note that you all aren't really able to respond directly to my questions, I'm not aware of other significant chances for dialogue with the impacted families. From my vantage point, it makes a whole lot more sense to unroll a redistricting proposal like this after a strategic planning period, where you've given ample time to hearing from families, community members, teachers, and administrators. As it stands now, I have a lot of questions about whether teachers and administrators at a school like Audubon, where our daughter will move from Mountain View, really welcome or are prepared for an 81-student increase that increases their overall attendance by almost half. I would like to hear more from the school board about how they plan to support the schools impacted by this redistricting so that students like my daughter won't suffer in their educational experience during a rocky transition. I also wonder why, given that the proposal expressly says future redistricting will likely be necessary, the board wouldn't keep changes to an absolute minimum, waiting to make more sweeping changes until after a thorough listening process. I encourage you to take great care with this process and use it as an opportunity to build trust and listen. In order to do so, I believe you need to delay this proposal and give more time to the process. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our comments by the public for this evening. And at this moment, I'm going to ask Caitlin, can you run get my folder? I think I left it in the other room. I apologize. And we're going to go, yeah, I can use that one. I've got, okay. We're going to move into highlights by board members. We're going to start with Mr. Cross.
I have a few tonight, and I'll try to be quick on it. Number one, I want to welcome Deputy Warwood tonight. Thank you for being here, and thank you for all the work you do out at East Rock. So, yeah, you're welcome, man. Thanks for being such an encourager and a good example for our kids. I love it. Last Tuesday, November 21st, Ms. Leah Dean and the staff out at Rockham Academy invited the school board members out to a Thanksgiving feast, and we had a great time out there celebrating with the staff and with the students. And I never win anything. I probably should have won. I played the lottery that day, but I won a cutting board. And so, Trayvon Wright made that. And afterwards, I went back to the classroom and had him with a wood burner. His teacher, Mr. Rhodes, allowed him to put his name in the cutting board, so that was cool. This morning, I visited with Dr. Emily Holloway out at Elkton Middle School, and I had an opportunity to visit Sarah Kaiser's classroom, A-class, and got to see some wood projects that they were doing there in the A-shop. So, that was really interesting, and seeing the kids, being in the shop class was really cool, them working with their hands. So, they enjoy doing that. And last, well, not last, the next on my list is, on the 11th, I had an opportunity to go out and watch Spotswood International High School play in a regional football game. It was cold that night, but TA did come out with the win, and they also went and played in the regional championship game and lost to LCA, which there's a lot of questions there with LCA being in our district. It's something that, as a school board member, I will be looking into it and speaking with Dr. Shiflett about this and seeing what we can do, because this is not the first time that our children, in my opinion, have been cheated out of a regional title and possibly a state title. This team that just came through at Turner Ashby High School was one of the best teams probably to come through that school. Not saying the best, because you know, you have some state championship teams that are out there, but that was before LCA was allowed to play in our region. So, they were a very talented team and group of kids to go up to Lynchburg, and to be beat by a school that allegedly is able to recruit. And we're going out and checking houses to make sure the kids live where they do within our district, you know? A small little district, and allegedly, they're able to recruit kids from all over the state and the nation. So, it's just not equitable when we talk about fairness in our region. So, it's something that I really want to look into. I know the Seminole District, a lot of those teams, they refuse to play them, and I would be in favor of not putting them on any of our regular season schedules and hopefully band together with a group of other divisions within our region to stand against them, if that's what we need to do. So, I want to say congratulations to Coach Turner and his coaching staff out there at Turner Ashby High School and all that you guys have done this year. You made our county proud. You did a fantastic job representing Rockham County at the state level, and we're proud of you. Our whole community is proud of you. So, again, this ain't the first time. I know Broadway's been impacted by LCA. I know Spotswood, one of their best baseball teams ever to make it to states, ran into LCA at the regional championship game in Lynchburg, and it just wasn't fair. It's not equitable. So, we need to look into that and see what we can do, because I feel like our kids here in Rockingham County and within our region are being cheated in the process. So, thank you to Coach Turner and the coaching staff out there at Turner Ashby High School. We're very proud of you, and yeah, that's all I've got to say with that right now. But last, I do want to say, because this is my last meeting with this board, and it's been on my schedule, in case the media throws it out there somewhere, but it's been on my schedule for a year now. I have the opportunity to go down to Central America every year on a missions trip, and December is when that trip is planned. So, I won't be able to make it here on the December 12th meeting or 11th meeting, and I'll be coming back on the 12th. It was not planned that way. So, if the media gets a hold of it and says, "Well, he didn't show up because he didn't want to be here for y'all." It's going away celebration. So, tonight, I do want to recognize Jack Dixon. It's been an honor serving with you on this board, and I appreciate you stepping up and filling a spot for our community. It really is a selfless position that you put yourself into, in a servant position that you did. And so, it's been an honor serving with you. It's been fun getting to know you and all the things that you do on the side. But thank you, and tell your family I said thanks for allowing you to be busy, come out. I know you've brought your kids sometime out to some meetings, but thank you so much for stepping up in a time when our community needed someone to step up. And it's been a pleasure getting to know you. Hopefully, we can remain friends throughout the coming years. So, Jack, thank you so much. Charlotte, it's been an honor serving on the board with you. One of my highlights with you was with you organizing the superintendent search. You did such a fabulous job in organizing that whole ordeal and keeping all board members informed of what was going on, and that just speaks to your credibility and your leadership skills. And it's been an honor to serve with you, to talk about baseball with you, and to disagree on certain subjects, but not do it in a good civil way. And so, I wish you the best. Thank you for all the years you invested in Rockham County Public Schools, and thank you for the past eight years serving on this board and all that you've done for Rockingham County. So, I wish you the best. I know you still, you're not going anywhere. You'll still be around, but it's been an honor to serve with you on this board. And last, tonight is a goodbye to Lowell. And I've said this from the very beginning, Lowell, you've shown me kindness throughout my whole, throughout my last two years, and I really do appreciate the kindness that you've shown towards me. We've not maybe always agreed on certain topics, but I can say that it's, I'm going to miss just your personality on the board, and I want to say thank you for over 20 years of your service here on the school board, serving our community. I know both you and Charlotte love children, and that's recognizable, and you've done a great job. We visited, as I said, we visited Rockham Academy this past week, and that's a tribute to you and what you've done here in the county, and I appreciate your time and effort that you've put in. But it's been a joy serving with you. I know you're not going anywhere either, and you're a big, you're a big name in the community, and a lot of people trust you. So, please, don't, please reach out to me at times when you have a need or anything. So, but it's been a joy serving with you. I do have a gift for you all, but it may not be available till the next board meeting, but I'll have someone deliver that here to you. So, God bless you, and it's been a joy being with you guys.
Thank you. Mr. Fulk? Mr. Dixon? Dr. McQuillen?
Thank you, Chair Lord. First of all, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and I hope you had a great time with your families. It's always good to have a Thanksgiving holiday. Everybody looks forward to it, and I'm glad we're all back here, safe and sound. And we're very happy that we were able to have this time with our families, and now we're back to the time between Thanksgiving and Christmas. It's going to be hectic. My next highlight is attending the VSBA conference. Dr. Shiflett and Ms. Laura and I attended and found the conference. We were there in person in Williamsburg and found the conference to be very enlightening. We always gain a lot of very useful information, not only with the presentations, but also the opportunity to speak with our colleagues, the people with whom we serve, not in Rockingham, but throughout the state, and that was a highlight for us. The next is the MTC. On the 21st is when we went to the luncheon, and Mr. Cross was there, and Dr. Shiflett was there, and Chair Laura was there, and I was there. We all had a wonderful Thanksgiving lunch, but in the morning, I went to breakfast at MTC. Lee Smith, who heads the Diesel Program, of which he is very proud and he should be, had me over for breakfast, and I enjoyed meeting the students. I enjoyed my time there. MTC is an outstanding school for career and technical education, and we should be very proud of what this school does, what the students do, and the teachers. It's just a fine institution. Next, I did go to, as I said, lunch with Leah Dean and her total staff, and what I noticed most was the fact that everybody participated. Regardless of what role you play in that school, you were part of that luncheon, and I thought that was wonderful. Everybody, there was just a good feeling, a good atmosphere about everybody being together. It looked like everybody enjoyed being together and hosting us while we were there. I also attended in the cold, as I've done all the time. I go to all the TA football games and freeze usually. In the beginning, it was too hot, but we were freezing the last time, and we always enjoy the sportsmanship, the good sportsmanship that happens at TA. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Dr. Shiflett can go with you next.
So, ma'am, I'll just say ditto to a few of these things. The RA lunch was absolutely terrific. Breakfast with Mr. Smith, I did that on one morning. The VSBA conference was great. Some of the keynote speakers were really terrific and enjoyed the camaraderie. I also had a chance to participate in the Peakview Elementary School. Their kindergartner had, they had a Thanksgiving feast one morning, and so I was able to participate in that. It was just fun to, you know, to see it with the older students at RA than with the kindergarteners, right? And it's just the spectrum of kids that we work with, from four-years-old to 18- and 19-year-old. So, it was really good and enjoyed that. And just finally, just to talk about the TA-Spotswood game, I was there. So, now, I guess fall sports are over, and now it's time for winter season. And so, I'll be at East Rockingham tomorrow night watching their girls play array, I believe. So, yeah, so we're back at it. Thank you.
Thank you. And yeah, ditto. The lunch was wonderful, the VSBA conference. And my highlight was supposed to be that I'm at the Chesapeake Bay with a bunch, with 27 middle schoolers, but you can see that I'm here. Because of bad weather forecast for Smith Island, they felt like the waves would be too rough to get us safely to Smith Island. So, I'd like to thank the Chesapeake Bay Foundation for putting our safety above their income, and they called off that trip, and hopefully, I'll get to come back in the spring when it's nice and warm and the seas are calm, and will have done that trip at another time. But yeah, there's a lot going on right now, and we're just excited to be part of Rockingham County Public Schools. And thank you all. I hope everyone did have a wonderful Thanksgiving and hope that everyone had a chance to spend some time with their families so we can really hit it hard the next couple of weeks before Christmas. Thank you all for being here, and we're going to move on to action items. And our first action item is the approval of the minutes. Members, do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Anyone? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Fulk. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote on approving the minutes of the November 13th, 2023 meeting as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Next item on the list is to approve the copy, bid recommendation for copy paper. Mr. Steve Reed.
Chair Lord, Dr. Shiflett, members of the board. The bid for copy paper was properly specified and advertised. We sent seven suppliers bid packages. We had four suppliers respond with a sealed bid as follows. Our recommendation is to award the contract to liberty paper from Los Angeles, California in the amount of $29.85 a carton or a total of $75,222.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Dr. Shiflett?
Chair Lord and board members, I recommend approval of the contract for copy paper to the lower bidder, Liberty Paper, as presented by Steve Reed, Director of Maintenance.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Members, do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Fulk. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuillen. Is there any discussion? How much paper is in a carton of paper? Is that like a case?
It's a case.
Okay, so it's several reams. It's not just one ream. Okay. It's like, wow, $27 or $29 for one ream, but it's, that's a whole case.
It's multiple reams, yes.
Okay, good, good. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the redistricting plan. Dr. Shiflett?
Chair Lord and members of the board, I recommend approval of the proposed redistricting plan as presented on October 9th, 2023, to be implemented for the 2024-2025 school year with the option for rising fifth graders, eighth graders, and 12th graders to remain at their current schools if their family is willing to provide transportation.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Members, do I have a motion so we can discuss?
I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. McQuillen. Do I have a second? The chair will second. Is there any discussion?
I have shared with each of the members and superintendent at different times and individually, my thoughts on this matter are that on something this momentous, when we're a month away from an entirely new board or a new majority being here, that we give them the opportunity to ask questions and study the issue, and then they can make a decision. And I feel that's the most respectful thing we can do for them as a new board coming in. I wish them very well, and I hope they do good things for Rockingham County, but I just think this is a very important issue for us to be deciding when I've only got one more meeting. And so, I don't feel right about pushing that off, I mean, pushing that upon them as a new board coming in. And so, I would ask to move to postpone until January this decision and then let the new board take it up. So, I'm making that motion now.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to postpone definitely to January 8th, 2024. Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Discussion? Anyone? I feel like our speaker tonight made a great point. I was quite concerned when, I know, I know that this plan has been out there since April, May, and then I know that, I feel like our superintendent has been talking about it, about it for quite some time. I feel like we talked about it even before April, but for the parents themselves not to have, not to have received the information, that is concerning to me. So, I could consider. Any further discussion, members?
I'm in favor with what Mr. Fulk is suggesting. I think it, last month, we don't want to saddle the next board with a decision that we're not going to have to live with. And I think with a majority change on the board, I think it's prudent to let them make that decision after studying the topic.
I would like to say that this is no reflection on our superintendent at all. I think it's a good plan. I think it's a plan that has actually been in discussion for quite some time. And, but I believe that the right thing to do is let the new board make the decision.
Yes, we have been deliberating on this redistricting plan for quite a while. But I also think one of the other reasons for us to complete this process now is because we are planning for the 23-24 school year, and budget season is upon us. The principals, the administrators, the central office staff will need to know to plan in order to plan for the number of students that would be in each building so that they would know number of teachers. They need to begin now, and this is like a closure. We, this board, undertook this project. We, this board, should see it to its conclusion. And that is why I think that we should make our decision this evening and to proceed with it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'll just add that I did reach out to the three oncoming board members and received mixed messages. One is concerned. The other two are not as concerned, but I still would like to hear some more information from them. Just in full disclosure, I'm letting you all know that as well. Any further comments?
I would say, the reason why I second, I would second, I do second Mr. Fulk's motion tonight is because I really, I really feel like we haven't, as a board, had some just board discussion, in-depth board discussion on what we want to see in that redistricting process. I know that there's been a recommendation from the superintendent, and I appreciate your recommendation of that. But as board members, it's our job to be able to say what we want to do. And I feel like we could have had some extra meetings where we could have talked about that throughout this process. So, with that being said, I don't feel comfortable in voting on it tonight just to pass it, because I know it impacts a lot of families within Rockham County, and I agree with Mr. Fulk. I think it may be a good idea for the new board members coming on to take a look at it and see what they think and go from there. So, that's why, just to be in full transparency.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to postpone the redistricting plan, we'll vote to postpone the redistricting plan until January 8th, 2024, and I'm going to do a roll call vote on that. Madam Clerk, can you roll call, please?
Mr. Cross?
Yeah.
Mr. Fulk?
Yeah.
Chair Lord? Dr. McQuillen?
No.
And Mr. Dixon?
Yay.
Thank you. The motion carries for one. We have postponed this vote until January 8th, 2024. And next on the agenda, that concludes our action items for the night. We're going to move on to information items. Oh, yay. I was going to ask somebody to turn off that microphone, but you're coming up here. You can just use it. Ms. Kim Tate, thank you.
Chair Lord, members of the board, Dr. Shiflett, it's appreciated for this opportunity to give you some updates on literacy in the division, what we have been working on over the last three years very intently. As I know you are probably aware, the Virginia Literacy Act of 2022 requires- As I know you are probably aware, the Virginia Literacy Act of 2022 requires core literacy instruction to be scientifically based in reading research and using evidence-based practices. This was the act by the General Assembly in 2022. Furthermore, VDOE requires us to use instructional materials that are aligned in this research, and they are finishing up those recommended materials. We've been told we'll get that list in December, so we look for the finalized list in the next few weeks. I'm very proud to say that Rockingham County was, as we have often been, ahead of the curve. It was in 2020 that we began our journey very intently. Some of us had been looking at this information for a bit. We had 30 teachers who voluntarily began a letters course of study in 2020, and we had a pilot going on at the same time at John Wayland Elementary School. So this was ahead of the 2022 act by the General Assembly. So with that said, I'm very proud of our leadership and our board support for doing what's best, and when we know better, we do better. This has been a journey for us of learning. In particular, in years one and two, as we began a division-wide process, we were focused on the phonics lesson plan. This begins year three, where we're focusing on comprehension. So you can see the timeline there. All of our teachers, and this includes all K5 elementary teachers, EL, and SPED teachers, were participating in units one through four, then units five through eight, in those first two years. So we were learning while we began doing. That's never an easy task, but I must credit our staff and our leadership for that work. As we began this fall, we have continued facilitation with teachers, as we did last year, who have moved into our division, so we're speaking one language, particularly as we work with students, as we provide instruction. And of course, we are continuing our coaching that is happening, but it is learning, it is collaborating. Additionally, I want you to see the wealth of resources that you, as a board, have supported over these last few years. I cannot say enough about, when I talk to other divisions, how proud I am to work in the school division. Someone who's been here now in year 40, we have given teachers as much as we could, and that's including your support and leadership support, both physical resources and investment in personnel, because we have our, what we call fondly, letters assistants, who are working so that teachers can use time for bridge to practice, to intentionally collaborate together. That's an investment in people, and ultimately, an investment in our students. We have integrated science and social studies lessons, something that my colleagues and I, the other supervisors, have been doing for 10 years now. We are doing it a much more intentional way in supporting that work during the literacy block. The personnel have a shared pedagogy, and that includes our para-professionals, who are providing small group support. They are providing one-on-one work with students to provide tier two and tier three interventions as needed in our classrooms, and we have done intentional training with those para-professionals, something that I've never seen in my entire career in this school division. I know we've probably done it, but I think we're doing it better, because that's what we do. And the comprehension lesson plans that have been developed were developed by Rockingham County Public School teachers. This summer, we had about 60 teachers who developed integrated lesson plans using that comprehension lesson plan template until we can get a curriculum in place. And you'll see the many other physical resources, everything from books that are grounded in the science of reading that we could provide to teachers as a resource, to some additional pilots that I'll talk about shortly. Our literacy heroes are many in this journey. They include our coaches, and again, an investment by the division in leadership in having coaches in the classroom who can mentor teachers, who can work one-on-one with teachers, who can model in classrooms where they are requested to go. They are facilitating data meetings that help people dig and let data drive the instruction tomorrow, next week, next month. You also see our reading specialists who have been true leaders and toilers in this journey. They have certainly stepped up from just, and I say just because it's such important work, doing intervention, something they went to school to do, working with students to provide intervention, to being even greater leaders in our buildings, providing facilitation for their colleagues in addition to their other responsibilities. They've led bridge-to-practice meetings on a regular basis, and now the Virginia Literacy Partnership has set that expectation just this year. We were already out there. We were already doing that. And so again, I am so very proud. And as I mentioned early, those para-professionals, they are our true partners in this journey. We couldn't do it without them. We had a lot of para-professionals in our buildings, but I can tell you that they are working right alongside our teachers to support our students, which is what we want to have happen. And of course, again, I've stayed in this division for a career because I believe in this place. Our classroom teachers are second to none, and anytime we go anywhere, people will say, "We got those ideas from Rockingham County Public Schools." I don't care what it's about, I hear that, and our teachers are our greatest ambassadors. And let me tell you, every time I go into a classroom, I am still learning and asking myself, "Why didn't I do that? I never visit a classroom." That I don't see something that I could have done better because of the people that I work with, and our teachers have labored tirelessly. Some, we pushed to that labor, some we pulled a little bit, but as I see, they are willing to do and to go above and beyond for the benefit of the students that we serve every day. VDOE is going to require teachers across Virginia to take a Canvas course next year. Rockingham County teachers will be exempt from that course because of their letters course of study. So once again, we have been able to work ahead, and so I think we will work smarter. I'm confident we will always work smarter. And again, we'll try to, if we learn something that's better, we'll do it tomorrow if we possibly can. So again, I, I celebrate leadership who could see this vision. I do want to share a little bit about how we sort of measure with the Virginia Literacy Act. We are currently piloting VOWs, which will replace the PALS screener that's done in K3. Rockingham was selected as one of the pilots for VOWs, and that will go into effect statewide next year. We have given suggestions about ways we think they could improve their data delivery, and some of the information that we get, we think it could be a little more specific, but we are privileged to have the opportunity to share our feedback. This is through the University of Virginia, and like I said, what was traditionally known as PALS. We do have a plan. We already had a textbook adoption committee in place. As we went into the, I guess, spring of 2021, maybe it was even earlier, I can't remember now, when we moved to additionally, or eventually adopted 6 through 12 textbook, I had a number of people in that textbook adoption committee who were in the process, a whole year ahead of everybody else, of doing the letters course of study, and they said to the textbook adoption committee, "Let's hold. Let's wait until we've all been through the course of study, and then we will make a better decision about what we need for our students." And boy, were they smart, because that's exactly what we should have done. And now I think we have a strong list from VDOE that are recommended texts that will align not only with what we're doing, but with the state's expectations. This year, we are piloting with a coalition of the willing. At their request, J. Frank Hilliard Middle School's English Department wanted to do the letters course of study. So they are doing one through four, and we've, we debated whether that was the direction to go, but they said, "We want to learn." And I can report to you from our coach there, we have a coach embedded facilitating as well as providing intervention at J. Frank. It is being very well received, and the questions that she is getting each week, it's just blowing Sarah away at what she is hearing from the teachers and what they want to learn and know. At the same time, we are piloting what we know as EBLI. It is an ETSEL intervention, evidence-based literacy intervention, at Hilliard, Spotswood, and at Turner Ashby. We are piloting this at Hilliard with middle school students. We are piloting at TA and at Spotswood with high school students. We have a larger English learner population at Spotswood. We have students who might be struggling or vulnerable readers at TA, and of course, then we have students who might need intervention at Hilliard. And so we know we need to do something different at middle and high school, because those students are developmentally at a different place, and so their academic needs may be different. We also know, we don't have any time to waste if a student is still struggling at middle or high school. And so we're seeing great success so far. I wouldn't say I have a lot of quantitative data yet, but we have a lot of qualitative data and feedback from students and from the instructors. Again, instructors who were willing to do, as they said to me, anything I can do to help the students that I serve. And so we put the pilots in those locations with the potential of having that intervention at all of our middle and high schools next year. And finally, of course, providing targeted and tiered intervention and support, all of those things, the expectation of the VLA. I wanted to share some data with you. I always need friends to help disaggregate, but figure one shows you the percentage of our students who were not meeting benchmark or grade level expectations, beginning in 2019 to what you see the spring of 2023. This is on the PALS screener. As you can see, 2021 was a tough year, and we all recognize with disruption, with students out of school, with some students not returning, or us trying to provide support to students online whose parents chose for them to stay home for another year. That was certainly, these, this is K2 data provided as of last spring. Certainly, what I would call over my career, that bottom quartile. It's something that I've spent 40 years trying to figure out how to fix. My theory is, we don't ever want a bottom quartile. We know that there maybe will be 5% of students who have a severe disability or learning struggle that may always stay there, and we want to serve because of where they are, but all students deserve to read. And so we want to eliminate that, and I've got some kindergarten data that is very exciting as we're moving in the right direction. I feel like we have returned to pre-COVID numbers, if you look at that K2 from last spring. K2 bans of risk membership is just taking that same data and putting it into what VOWs is using, bans of risk now. Not only do we concern ourselves with our students who are at highest risk, but we also want to have data to keep an eye on students of medium risk, who might need intervention and support. Hopefully, intervention is always a short term, but we want to make sure that we get short-term interventions, especially for those students of medium risk. I think you can see that the trajectory of our student performance on PALS is moving in the right direction, because roughly 75% of our students are already where we want them to be as readers, okay, or at least would be those grade level expectations. We are continuing to address students with data who are high-risk, and that tier two and three intervention is happening both with classroom teachers, with our EL teachers, and with our special education teachers as needed, because again, we're all speaking the same language. And here's that kindergarten data. This is from the spring of 2023. If we look at where we are after just three years of teachers learning, systemic change is hard, but also at what students are learning. We are below the state average on what we would say students at risk, students below benchmark already in kindergarten. And of those kindergartners, almost one, well, one half of our students, over one half of our students had perfect spelling scores. And of course, you see that 40% had perfect scores altogether. This is a move in the right direction for our students. Are we perfect yet? No, but we'll be better tomorrow than we are today. So the takeaways. We want to give credit to our teachers and our coaches. The bridge to practice time is essential to make sure that we look at the data to drive our instruction. That has been our mantra from the beginning, and understanding that while years one and two focused on phonics, phonics is a linear process. It's much like me and a math problem. You can probably tell where my understanding fell apart in a math problem, but when you're talking about comprehension, that's a lot tougher to think about, because all of that happens inside my brain. It's not necessarily visible. There's not a place that we can necessarily pinpoint, though we do have some ideas. Comprehension is built on background knowledge, vocabulary, fluency. That comprehension piece, being able to infer or identify what's this mostly about, is very important, and of course, being able to write, to synthesize. Comprehension is dependent on all of those things. It's knowledge building. It's breaking down one component to figure out where the frustration lies. Is the child not a fluent reader? Or is it the child doesn't have enough background knowledge to be able to access the text? Maybe there was something that a student could read, but my vocabulary is insufficient. So I could read the physics book and decode it, but I still might not be able to tell you what I read after the first reading, because I don't have enough background knowledge. It's not that I can't read it. Comprehension will take time, but we are working on that K12, K12. So I always have to live in hope, and if we look at these, Akadence is a screener that we're now using at grades four to five to try to dig into the comprehension piece, to be able to use the components and look at where we are. In the fall, you see the fourth and fifth grade scores. In the fall, you see the 4th and 5th grade scores and the growth of our students, and that's what we are about. We don't all start at the same place. And so we want to encourage growth at every opportunity and to be able to use data to determine if we have grown, or do we need to go back to the drawing board and figure out what we can do better. We hope that comprehension will be, and it should be systematically taught within a curriculum, which is the importance of getting that new curriculum in place. I cannot focus enough on our teachers and what they do every day. These are some statements from our teachers across the division at different grade levels. Phonics has gone really well in the past, but last year I saw so much progress with my students, and I never heard them gripe or complain when we had to do phonics. As I get my groove each year, it's fun learning for my students. This year, my students are way lower than they ever have been, and overall, they're doing pretty well with it. It just takes time for us to get through a lesson as it goes slower. But I anticipate seeing more progress. I enjoy teaching phonics to my students and trying to find new ways to incorporate movement and routine into it. On Day 5 of each lesson, I challenge my students to a game, and they have to tap the word correctly and say it correctly before I guess what the word is without looking. I listen. Sometimes I'm able to figure it out, and other times I don't, but they have so much fun with things like that. Rachel Bokter in 2nd grade from Cub Run. Chris Graham, I feel like we're finally doing what's best for our students. Why wouldn't we teach the code to learn to read? My students are gaining more self-confidence since we started using the letters approach. Chris is a teacher, longtime teacher at Folks Run in 1st grade, of course, former Regional Teacher of the Year. When we look at grades 4 and 5, we have some teams. The comprehension lesson pans provide students with daily opportunities to be engaged in challenging texts. We are very happy that all students are being exposed to these texts and are getting the chance to be involved in the comprehension process as opposed to previous years when we were focused solely on phonics-based instruction. The incorporation of the fluency component into the lessons is actively providing students with guided opportunities to practice reading naturally, which we look forward to seeing cross over into their independent reading time. And finally, integrating science and social studies with literacy has been beneficial to our students. We are building background knowledge during literacy to support our curriculum. Students are able to access the knowledge that they gain from reading and apply it to content discussions. They are making connections, and it's enhancing their critical thinking and literacy skills. Teachers are collaborating. They are sharing a common language and practice, and they support each other through intentional conversations and instruction. It is an integrated approach, all of us working together, K-5 and 6-12, in order to do better when we know better.
Thank you very much. Board members, do you have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I just want to compliment you and the entire team on the progress you've made and the heart that you've all put into it. It has really done the children of Rockingham County good.
We'll get there. We'll get there. And the important thing, we're not teaching to a test, we're teaching them all to read.
Yes.
And that has always been so important, not that the other assessments aren't. And it is truly, again, a team effort. I'm just a small cog in the wheel. The teachers are the real heroes, and our coaches and our literacy team providing that support.
Do you have a percentage on how many kids are on grade-level reading in the county?
I don't. We might be able to figure that out. Grade level is a kind of a sticky term, because it's difficult, it's like Lexile levels. Diary of a Wimpy Kid has a higher Lexile level than The Grapes of Wrath, but I'd never hand The Grapes of Wrath to an elementary student, because even if they could read the words, they wouldn't understand it. But yeah, I think we can look at what their benchmarks are and what the expected benchmarks are in the science of reading, and we'll look to the team to see if there's a way. Again, we've always dealt in grade levels historically, but I don't know that that's necessarily, you know, again, I taught AP for a number of years, and I had what I would say an eight-year ability level difference in the room. Some could have walked in one door and out another, and some were there for rich conversation experience and learning, but I don't know they were all in the same.
Is that a number that you can bring back for the board?
We can, we can try. I mean, again, it's like PALS deals in benchmarks, they don't necessarily deal in grade level, because again, the science of reading would indicate that we want to look at the individual components.
But, all right, so if my, say, my son's in 8th grade right now, and he's assessed every year where he's at, so will he be assessed that, yeah, he's on an 8th grade reading level, or he's actually on a 4th grade reading level? Do we do that?
In middle school, at grades 6 and 7, we have historically used some reading plus data to determine where to begin a student in independent instruction. Yeah, I mean, we can give you the data we have. I don't know that grade level is a, science and evidence-based instruction would say that's not necessarily, we have a scope and sequence we want students to complete, K2, and then 3-5. But we can certainly pull what data we have to share with the board in that regard.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Kim, I understand that this program is wonderful, not just for all of our students, but for students who are categorized as ELL or EL, and students who are also in special education. Have you, can you reify that?
I would certainly say so. In looking at our interventions in particular, it's having those students, because some students would need support both for a specific learning disability, and they also might be a language learner. And again, I think what we have learned is the importance of making sure that what a specialist, whether it's the reading specialist, an EL teacher, or a special education teacher is doing, is aligned with what is happening in the classroom teacher. It's really, teachers have so much to do, and to find time to individually talk about students and their data, and making sure that what we are doing complements each other as opposed to, it wasn't that anybody's ever done anything wrong, but we want to make sure that we are moving students as quickly as we can. We want that growth sooner rather than later, if possible.
Any additional questions?
So I want to make two other comments. Kimber, you did a wonderful job, by the way. Great presentation. So Kimber has in her hand a handwriting book, and so one of the, and I asked them to bring this, I want you to just look at this for a second, just pass it through. Do not write in it.
Yeah, we're bringing four of these, we're using for kids.
So, but this is, this came about, we were talking about our handwriting book we had been buying, purchasing from Zane Blosser for a number of years, and the teachers were commenting, well, this, this is not aligned with our scope and sequence as far as the orders in which we teach the sounds and the letters. So someone had the idea of, well, why don't we just create our own handwriting book? And so the literacy team, and Stephanie Fails and some ITRTs, created that book that you'll have a chance to look at, and then we had it published, someone here locally printed it, so we supported a local company. But it's just high quality, and everyone's using the same language, as we talk to young students about how you form letters, and so trying to just get consistency. So I was very proud of the work that they've done and where we are. It's been hard work, it's been difficult, and we don't want to ever just kind of brush that off, but it has been a challenge, but at the same time, it's benefiting students. And as Kimber suggested, we are ahead of the curve. And the State Superintendent of Instruction for the Department of Education will be coming to Rockingham County on December the 7th to look at our reading program, because I've had conversations with her, I've shared some emails, and she wants to see what we're doing herself, and she's bringing her Deputy Assistant Superintendent. So they're coming to Mountain View on the 7th, and we're going to talk to them a little bit about what, you know, sort of our process, and then actually let them visit classrooms and see what we're doing. And so I'm really excited about that, having an opportunity to kind of highlight what we're doing.
And in addition, I will say that the, doing the interventions in middle and high school, some of that has been some handwriting intervention, which is correlates with being able to read, and the aha moments, and the things we're hearing from teachers in other content areas about suddenly a student can understand, and it's truly phenomenal. And that is interventionist, being very intentional about helping students to distinguish some errors in their handwriting and their handwriting fluency, which then affects their reading fluency. And I was like, duh, why didn't I ever think of that? And so again, we can move more quickly when we recognize that that is the issue for our student. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our information items for the evening. We'll now move into other business, school board questions and comments. Mr. Cross, Jim, Mr. Falk, Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, Chair Lohr. Dr. Shiflett, now that we're rolling into winter sports, I was curious, and I know we've only got one meeting left, but if we could get an update on where we're at with digital ticketing going into winter sports. I know we had talked about it a little bit previously, but I, we haven't gotten any update on what's going on with that and what our plans moving forward are. So just curious if we could have that, or?
Sure, we can do that. No, and I think too, I think there's been some discussion to move that even to the spring, so not to do something with winter sports. Is that correct? Yeah, that's correct. So nothing for the winter, kind of saying what we were, status quo, but then having conversations about new board coming on, and what do we want to do in the springtime? So, yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. McQuillen?
I would just like to thank Ms. Tate for the outstanding presentation. I know we're ahead of the curve in the reading, and I think that's absolutely spectacular, but the most important thing is our students are the beneficiaries, and that's, that's where we are. We want our students to have the very best education that we possibly provide, and we thank our staff, because I know it was challenging in the beginning, but the students are showing us that it's working, and we think, we're thankful. Thank you.
Thank you. I always like to ask at this time of the program, are there any students here? And you can just raise your hand. Thank you for coming. I hope you've enjoyed this evening and hope you've learned something. And thank you for coming, because you're the reason we do this. So, and it's only, for those of you watching online, it's only one student tonight, one brave soul came out in this chilly weather tonight. Dr. Shiflett, any closing comments?
No, I just want to, once again, say thank you to our literacy team, the leadership that Alex has provided, and Kimber, and the coaches, and all of our teachers who stepped up and worked to improve our reading instruction and our reading specialists. And again, it was hard work, and we're just thankful that they were willing to put in the effort to help our kids. That's what we're here for, to help our students. So thank you to those folks.
Yes, definitely, thank you. Thanks, Ms. Tate, for your presentation and all your hard work, and to all the staff that worked so hard with Udders. Thank you all. And thank you to everyone for coming tonight. I hope you had a wonderful Thanksgiving. I hope you have a wonderful two weeks as we move up towards Christmas. Safe travels home. But before we go, members, we have reason to enter closed session. Do I have a motion?
I moved that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of the Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711. A, personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation. And two, one or more particular students specifically related to discipline that would involve disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of going into closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. We're now in closed session. Thank you all.